Rob, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting, this work session meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Laura, could you please call the roll? Garcia?
Here.
Gephardt?
Here.
Niznick?
Here.
Raj Paul?
Here.
Sargent?
Here.
Sweeney Moran?
Here.
Zess?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is strategic plan metrics. Dr. Anderson, I'll turn it over to you to do the introduction.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the board. Great to see everyone this evening. Tonight is our quarterly update to the board on our strategic plan metrics. Here to present, our deputy superintendent of academics, Dr. Delora De La Cruz, and our director of assessment accountability, Dr. Jonathan Dings. And I will turn it over to Dr. De La Cruz.
Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. As you recall, in June and September, Jonathan and I provided updates to the board in relation to our metrics with the data that we had available at the time. And tonight, we're going to be sharing information and outcomes with the additional data that we now have as related to our metrics. Our metrics are the measures, of course, by which we are holding ourselves accountable to the work of our Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan to meet the expectations that we've set out in each of our four themes. We have a cycle of data to share with the board based on when that data becomes available. So, as you recall, in June and September, we shared data about the metrics that you see here in blue. Tonight, we're going to share with you new metrics that you'll see on the next slide in red. And so, tonight, we're going to share outcomes related to access to increased learning time, the opportunity to accelerate in math, access to literacy intervention, staffing into special education. At last board meeting, Dr. Hill shared information and data about teachers and leaders of color. Tonight, we'll be sharing additional information about enrollment in AP and IB, also other advanced coursework, and some information about dual or concurrent enrollment that we'll be sharing slightly differently because it's not captured in VisLab in the way that we're visualizing it yet, but we'll have information to share with you. The data sets that we have available right now are closely connected to our work in closing opportunity gaps, and Jonathan will be sharing those data sets with you now.
President Gephardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. So, as we, we're thinking about the metrics that we have, right? These will be updates to things you saw in June and will be the metrics that have had some chance to move since then based on what we look at here, such as a new enrollment in a course. So, when we look at mathematics acceleration, which we've defined here by really three checkpoint grades, right? Fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade, we look at these in terms of the makeup of students enrolling in a course that is advanced for each of those grade levels. So, at fifth grade, it's sixth grade math or higher; at eighth grade, it's algebra or higher; and at 11th grade, it's precalculus or higher. And what we see is that compared to the data we shared with you about the previous year, enrollment results are basically steady, that we see the same level of disproportionality that we've seen in math. We would note that the changes that we see in math over time require perhaps the most advanced planning because of the sequential nature of math. So, as we look at these data, right, we would see that these are basically steady compared to the place we landed on at the end of the pandemic, as I should say, our most recent post-pandemic year fully completed. We hope it's post. When we look at elementary interventions, we look at gap-closing efforts that we have in terms of when we provide a formal intervention to a student who has a significant reading deficiency. And then, the way that we've defined this is in terms of students who are not already served on an IEP, right? Because their needs are being met through the IEP. And we also wouldn't count students who are very beginning English, labeled as non-English profession in the formal system where this is done, because in that case, providing a reading intervention isn't what's yet called for. And when we look at these data, we see this as a gap-closing effort. That is, that students in impacted groups get interventions at a higher rate than students otherwise here at the elementary level, based on interventions completed and entered to date. We would note that over time, there'll be more students identified, there'll be more interventions. These data aren't completely static, but this gives you an idea of the pattern we have in this current fall. We also look at these at the secondary level and would say that we see the same kind of pattern generally, but our entry of data is not yet complete. There are a number of reasons for that. We're also, as we work with metrics over time, we get to learn a little bit more about them and find that if you change one thing in the data warehouse, you might find changes on the other end also. So, expect these data to be updated, and updated after we do things like hiring interventionists at Casey, right? Which is going to change these kind of figures that we have. But also, as we more clearly define for ourselves, SRD, the abbreviation for significant reading deficiency, has a very clear meaning in the early part of elementary. It's a little less clear that we should be using that language in middle and high school, but I could go on about this all night. Instead, we'll go to the next slide. What we see, again, driven by this definition of students with a significant reading deficiency, is that we have a gap-closing effort represented in work that was done over summer. That is, when we're looking at impacted elementary students who attend summer learning, we see that there is a focus there on serving students who have the kinds of needs that can be addressed over time with added time. So, we label this really as a bright spot in the work that's being done. Some of the other metrics that we have, right, also, we categorize around reducing disproportionality. And we note that in one of these areas, particularly discipline, there's been a lot of work done in the last year and a half, in that that work takes the form of different hiring for jobs, and that this is very substantial work. And as we're thinking of this, right, this incorporates training that's being done, as well as support at the Ed Center, and a focus on the work that we have. What we've seen so far this year, at the end of last month, is that the disproportionality in suspensions persists. This obviously remains a problematic pattern in our data, a major topic of conversation. You should see the superintendent's whiteboard going down into detail what the metrics are. And I would have loved to be there for the conversation he had with folks who were told to pay even more attention, and here's how we're going to focus, here's where we're going to help schools, here's what it means when you have fights. But I'm taking away, but there is work to be done here. We would hope over this year to reduce the pattern that we're on now, which we have slightly more suspensions at the end of September as we have in past years, sorry, last year, the year we're focusing on for the comparison. But I'm sure we can talk more about this in the end when you have questions. In terms of special education, we think of that as an area of trying to reduce disproportionality over time. We found that so far this fall, we have an increase of about a point or a point and a half for Latinx kids and students who are eligible for free reduced lunch. We would note, however, that the more detailed monitoring of this that happens, which is done by our special education department, would indicate that we've not yet crossed through the thresholds for being problematically disproportionate within specific disabilities. So, if these patterns hold for the December count, we will have, we would really have been on track to maintain no longer being identified as so disproportionate that we need to designate coordinating early intervention services funds beyond September of next year. That may be kind of technical, but it's the much more high stakes and bigger deal of the ways in which these gaps are looked at over time. In addition to looking at math courses, we look at advanced courses overall as an area where we're trying to reduce disproportionality. And we would point to some progress here by about half a point to a point for Latinx students and those who are eligible for free reduced lunch. This is a positive pattern, but one we'd like to see even more positive over time, in that we will monitor over the year, and that enrollments do change a bit. You know, if I can even monitor changes week to week a little bit, but then we're getting into the decimal point details, which is not really what we want you to need to hear unless you're way into that.
So, while we know that we have work to do and that work is very clear, we do have some bright spots. We're trending in the right direction for advanced course enrollment for Latinx students and students eligible for free and reduced lunch. What you don't see in the slides, but I pointed to earlier that I wanted to share, is some hot-off-the-presses information that we weren't able to visualize because the way and place it was recorded in IC didn't show up in a VisLab visualization, but I-
Yet. Yet.
Yet, yet. But I do want to share the celebration in concurrent or dual enrollment. This fall, as compared to all of last year, we've doubled concurrent enrollment sections in high school from 16 to 36, which, of course, improves accessibility to concurrent enrollment opportunities for all students. And all high schools are in the planning phase now to increase their concurrent enrollment sections even more for spring of '23. We're also really pleased to have a 32% increase in enrollment in concurrent enrollment courses this fall as compared to all of last year, moving from 582 students last year to 770 students just this fall participating. And this increase is due mostly to the number of courses now offered in our BVSD high schools. And with that overall increase across all student groups, I do want to highlight some student groups in particular. In terms of participation, we have a 48% increase in female participation, a 52% increase in participation of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, a 43% increase of students who have an IEP or a 504, a 25% increase in participation for Black or African-American students, a 73% increase for Hispanic Latino students. We're really, really proud of our team who's working so incredibly hard to give more access to students. And we will provide the board with this information and this data in another way. It's just so hot-off-the-presses, but we wanted to share it tonight. So, continuing with our highlights, we are continuing our efforts to make advanced math offerings more accessible. We've also provided targeted intervention through summer learning to increase numbers of Latinx and students eligible for free and reduced lunch, and have expanded literacy interventions in both brick and mortar, and also through an innovative program called the VIP, which is the Virtual Interventions Program, where an additional 100 students across nine campuses who missed out on foundational reading skills due to the pandemic are now being provided with evidence-based reading interventions. And this is a really exciting way to reimagine what's possible, and it's meeting a definite need, and it's being received really well across schools by students and families. In terms of opportunities, as I stated, we know that we have work to do. Grad Plus continues to pave the way for expanded opportunities and as an avenue for students of color, particularly Latinx students and students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, to have increased offerings in advanced AP, IB, concurrent enrollment, and more. As I just shared, we're making great strides in concurrent enrollment. We continue to expand math offerings. We have begun updating the math coursework pathways, which we anticipate will be completed by the end of the school year, if not sooner. As we focus on reducing disproportionality, we're increasing training and implementation of restorative practices, alternatives to suspension, culturally responsive practices. Janelle King, our Restorative Practices Specialist, will share detailed information with the board at the October 25th board meeting, including numbers of schools and personnel who've been trained in restorative practices and who are engaging in restorative interventions. Something to note, which I'm sure that Janelle will also highlight, is that just like all quality initiatives being implemented consistently, it takes about three to five years for restorative practices to make an impactful change in patterns of discipline over time. We're also taking up the issue of disproportionate discipline with renewed efforts by providing focused, intentional supports for schools whose data shows greater disproportionality for discipline and responses. These efforts are intended to implement proactive and culturally responsive strategies in terms of responses to behavior and discipline. And as I mentioned, we'll have an update about all of that on October 25th. In addition to these efforts, and as importantly, our Equity and Community Engagement Team, along with our very own teachers and educational support personnel, are providing training across our district in cultural responsiveness. So, with continuous professional learning, our leaders are getting more and more adept in multi-tiered systems of support, applications of interventions, cultural awareness, and support to decrease disproportionate staffing into special education. This is all really important work underway in BVSD, and we are focused and intentional and aligning perhaps like never before. And with that, we are happy to take your questions.
Richard?
Muchas gracias.
De nada.
Great presentation. Things to celebrate, right on. A couple of things that I'd like to learn a little bit more is, as you're looking at concurrent enrollment, are you tracking by student how many concurrent classes they're taking?
How many?
Yeah.
We can get that data. Specifically, I asked our team to provide data around the numbers of students comparing last year to this year and disaggregating that so we could see what students are participating. But we absolutely can provide that information.
Because I'm really looking at trying to figure out, if the students are taking higher ed classes, let's say, and one student takes three or four classes over the course of his high school career, that doesn't get you anywhere to getting a two-year degree. Okay? So, I'm just looking at if you're all thinking about how do we get kids to enroll in concurrent classes where they will earn two years of community college, for example? Yeah? And I know I've been on this platform for a while in terms of, okay, how do we get our students, especially Latinx students or Latino students, or Latin students, because I know some people don't like Latinx, Latin students, to get a two-year degree before they graduate from high school? And if that's something that you're all looking at, or if it's a possibility, and how quickly will we get to that stage? And then, the other one is, when you're looking at the reduced disproportionality, alternatives to suspension, et cetera, we do have some high schools that are still suspending kids, okay? And they're not, they're not in this frame of mind in terms of what are the alternatives? Case in point is, I got an email from one dad, you know, very concerned about his kids that are constantly being suspended. So, I'm wondering if we have a practice in our district now, rather than suspending kids, if we have this alternative suspension and focusing on that so that we don't actually suspend kids? I mean, what's the purpose of suspension? And then, the other one is around truancy. Do you have any data concerning truancy? How many kids are flagged for truancy and are heading towards truancy court, or whatever the thing is now? I know before, you used to have a truancy, not a department, but a process where the kids, rather than going to truancy court, they would actually hold court like here at the Ed Center or something like that. Do you have anything like, are we going to hear anything about that in the future? Because I'm really interested to see how many Latin students are being referred to truancy courts, you know, that kind of stuff.
I'll take a couple of those, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. De La Cruz to fill in any gaps that I don't answer. So, attendance data is not part of the strategic plan metrics. Attendance data is data that we track, and we do have attendance advocates that work throughout the district and work with students who are habitually absent or having patterns in attendance that are troublesome. And so, we do have folks, we could certainly look at and dig into that data. I think that we do have a system of support that we could get you all more information on, on what do we do when a student is not showing up to school, and how do we respond to that? In regards to suspensions, alternative to suspensions, disproportionate discipline, one of the beauties of tracking how you're doing in real time is that you can intervene in real time, right? When I think about previous versions of reporting out to the board and to the community, most happen towards the end of the year. Here's how we did. We'll try to do better next year. It doesn't give you the opportunity to intervene in real time. So, what we'll be doing is, as Jonathan alluded to, you know, we've disaggregated some of the data from the first nine weeks. We've identified some patterns. We've identified some areas in which we need to provide some more intensive support to individuals that are in charge of processing the discipline in schools, right? To make sure that they know and understand the expectation. We're putting some safeguards in place to ensure that this pattern of disproportionality begins to shift and turn. And so, we've put some more expectations, some more training, and just some more, let's say, quality control measures in place to keep an eye on what's happening. So, by the time we have this meeting in December, we will have done even some more. It's not, hey, just do better. It's, these are the things that we're doing to try to make sure that we improve those efforts. And then, finally, in regards to concurrent enrollment, I do believe that we're on the brink of some really exciting partnerships with our partners in higher education, Front Range Community College, CU and others, to begin to really piece together those courses to a pathway that can lead to a degree. Right, to, Richard, to your point, if you're just taking random college classes and they don't align to a major, right, we would be giving kids a false sense of purity that they've done all this job to prepare, right, to be who it is they want to, yet to show up at the university and realize that half of the courses don't count. So, I'm sensitive to that. And I think that as we put this, we build our concurrent enrollment opportunities for kids, we have to be really sensitive to that, to make sure that they know and understand the courses they're taking are going to lead to, to lead to those majors and transfer to any state university in the state. And those are the courses that we're really focused on, really increasing within the district, those that we know that are transferable to a majority of majors, and there's a subset of those, and we're working on that. So, Laura, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I would only add to that, that exactly what Dr. Anderson just said, which is, we have some pathways toward that associate's degree that you're referring to out of high school, and we're fortifying those and building, or expanding those pathways so that even more students can have access, in particular, thinking about first-generation students, Latin students, and also students who are experiencing poverty. Also, we have expanded the work in multi-tiered systems of support. Many people think of that as an academic conversation, but it's also a behavior and discipline conversation, too. So, really building in, in particular, conversations with our secondary folks around early intervention when it comes to student behaviors and thinking on that front end of things rather than getting to suspension. However, having said that, as Dr. Anderson said, we're looking really precisely at what's very live and dynamic data and have already begun interventions with some of our schools. And then, there's a bigger conversation also around restorative practices, training around that. And I do believe that each of the things that I just named complement each other and will result over time in the reductions that we know we are expecting and anticipating in those exclusionary discipline responses.
Thanks again, Dr. De La Cruz. Another question that I have is on the restorative practices. Do you have, or are you thinking, or how are you thinking about including not just the student, but the family in this process of restorative practices, for example?
I'm really excited for you all to have the opportunity on October 25th for Janelle King to present to you everything that we have underway around restorative practices, including a very robust, comprehensive restorative practices toolkit for everyone in our system, and a website that she's created, connected, linked to the BVSD website for families to know and understand and practice restorative interventions at home, but also to be engaged at the school level, too. So, we're really looking, and the work is already done in many respects. We're just unveiling it at how to partner best with families to bring them into the conversations, because we know that that fortifies the experience of a more positive outcome for students.
Well, that's exciting, and I didn't mean to get ahead of whatever that presentation is going to be on October 25th. Do you have any information regarding or on the increasing offers and support in advanced AP and IB? Do we have, because I didn't see the data. How are we doing in terms of closing that opportunity gap for students of color, Latin, Latin students, et cetera? Are we providing more opportunities, or is that?
Well, when we think about AP specifically, if I understand your question, you're asking, what are we doing to put in place expanded opportunities for underrepresented students to participate in AP, IB courses?
Yeah, decrease the disproportionality of the number of students that are not taking AP classes. Am I making sense? Is that clear?
Is it?
So, one of the main features of work at high schools is to conduct outreach. And we've, just in the last couple of weeks, given a ninth through the eleventh graders survey where they indicate what their interest is in advanced courses and in work-based learning opportunities, as well as some ideas from them about what would help them wanted to take an advanced course, and the name of a trusted adult at the school that they would like to hear from about that. So, part of our work there really is specific targeted outreach, and we'll look forward to seeing how that impacts the advanced course enrollment over time.
Thanks a lot. And that's it for now, but I may come back, okay? Because I'm still processing the presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Nicole?
First question, just on clarification, your early slides about intervent, um, interventions for elementary and secondary, you talked specifically about literacy, but was that just an example, or those liter, those interventions, do they encompass literacy and mathematics on those slides seven and eight?
Um, this, 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 this is, this is, this is about literacy, uh, and formal interventions provided by an interventionist?
Do we have any information on interventions around math supports for students?
Um, no. I mean, I mean, the, 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 the data that we, that we, that we capture is which particular type of intervention. Is it, is it OG? Is it level literacy intervention? Is it really reading? Uh, I mean, there, there's, the, the information that we capture is what's the name of the intervention being given, and those are, 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 around literacy, not, not around math.
Thanks. Next question, you know, part of the discipline and student code policies that were overhauled a few years back was to continue to update those policies based on available data that we collect. And are you keeping track of, or are we keeping track of any meaningful way, ways in which those policies could be improved based on the persistent disproportionality and what we're seeing at site base that might improve our work moving forward as well?
So, yes. I would say that after the first nine weeks, I think the tactics that we're using are to intervene at the schools with the policy and matrix as is, right, and, and helping and supporting the individuals that are using those tools. Um, I, I would say that, um, after a couple more, like, you know, by the third nine weeks, we would see some patterns after our interventions. And if those interventions aren't creating better outcomes, right, I think then it's time to begin to start to look at what those policy, like, policies, the matrices, because it may be those things, right? I, I would say at this point, um, as opposed to focusing on those things, we're focusing on the people and the schools using those, those, um, those, you know, the, the matrix and, um, and the policy. And so that would be more of a second semester type of an approach. But I, I assure you that we're keeping a very close eye by code, right, by school, by, um, uh, the, uh, the consequence, whether it's, you know, exclusionary discipline or not, how many folks are using alternative suspension, how many folks are using, um, restorative practices? Are those responses proportionate to the population? I, I, so, so we're able to dig in, 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 really, I think, significant ways in this area. And I would say that if this work does, if, if increased support, increased training, um, increased, increased accountability around that, um, if those things don't work, then, then I think that, you know, and I, and I think we have to have the conversation second semester either way, because either they're working or they're not.
No, I appreciate that, because that was, there was some concern around the matrix and how it was gonna, how that tool in itself was gonna impact the results that we see. So, I'm glad we're staying on that. Other thought that I have, or wondering that I have is, um, when we think about advanced courses at all these levels, we're entering into open enrollment season, and even if you're not gonna open enroll, a lot of folks are getting into schools to see what they have to offer. Is there a concerted effort to, to provide information to parents at these events or leading up to that open enrollment season, much like we are, you're talking to students? So the parents know and can advocate for their child, um, just bring that awareness for families that don't have experience with AP and IB, and what does that mean, and what's concurrent enrollment? Um, helping those parents understand what opportunities exist at their school or other schools for their students is just another avenue we need to keep messaging. I was wondering if we have, if you're working on plans for that as well?
I would say that, um, open enrollment or their homeschool where they're at, right, that as we expand concurrent enrollment, it'll be the expectation that information is shared. Typically, I'm thinking middle school, I'm thinking high school, there's typically grade level assemblies when, when the, um, when the counselors are trying to, um, support students who are signing up for courses. I think that there'll be some information there. But certainly, um, that, that we'll be pushing out additional information for all schools in regards to these opportunities, uh, through, um, our college and career connections office. Do I have that, that right? To let folks know of the concurrent enrollment opportunities and advanced opportunities as well. You know, I think, Nicole, what you're alluding to is that, is this, um, which, which is, is something that I think is, is a root problem that we have to, to really dig into, is that parents, um, potentially are going to open enrollment to solve the, the academic needs of their, of their students versus us providing those opportunities equitably across schools. And, um, and I think that that's something that's on our radar as we begin to expand opportunities, that, um, you don't have to try to open enroll your kid in a certain school to get the things that they need to be prepared for what they want to do in the future. And so I think that that's long-term work. I think that we're making headway there. Don't think we'll be perfect. I don't think we'll be perfect by open enrollment. But I hear the, the point that you're making, and I think that's something that's definitely on our radar, and, and radar, and certainly important. I don't know if you had anything to add?
And I think that's great. What schools choose to message and not, not to message is important. So, making sure all of our schools are kind of emphasizing similar things, so people do feel confident in what their neighborhood schools are offering, um, as part of this process is important. So, thank you.
So I just have a quick question to follow up with what Richard was talking about. So Rob, can you explain a little bit more about what we're doing? I didn't understand your answer on truancy and chronic absenteeism, because to me, none of this matters if we can't get kids in school. So, maybe you could talk a little about that? It's, I know it may not be part of our metrics, but I'm sure we're paying attention to it, and maybe at some point we could get some updates on what that's looking like? Is it, are we having more chronic absenteeism or truancy this year, or how, what is that looking like?
Here's what I propose that we do. Let our team, um, let our team put together some high-level attendance data for you all. Think that we add this to our prioritization conversation, if this is of interest to the board on kind of some of the details, but we can give a high-level overview and news and notes on the process. I don't know that I could speak confidently to everything that our attendance advocates do in regards to the processes, truancy court, or fake truancy court, um, some of those tactics, uh, that we use. I, I wouldn't be able to speak to those, but let us get that information to you all.
So, more, I don't really need to know the exacts of how a kid gets into truancy court, but what are our trends? How are, what are we seeing? Are kids showing up to school, are kids not showing up to school? What does that look like? Because I know that under some states, for their ESA requirement, they actually track truancy and track attendance, which I think is a really important thing to track. And so, I'm just kind of curious what we do at, at the district level and how we're trying to address that need.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that information, um, to the board and then have a conversation on if there's more information that you want to see, or if we want to have a, a formal board presentation, we could work on that.
All right, Richard, did you have anything else? We're supposed to circle back to you.
Just getting back to, uh, the truancy court thing, I think, uh, I'm really interested in that because it is one of those, uh, school-to-prison pipeline things that, that we're dealing with, okay? So if I could get information on that, that would really be appreciative. Uh, and only because I've sat in the courtroom a few times when I see kids go by, and, uh, many of them brown faces, so.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you very much. It was very informative. Really appreciate all your hard work. Thanks.
If I could just take a moment to commend our, our, our team, uh, both Dr. De La Cruz and Dr. Dings have worked tirelessly to make sure that we have the right information to share with our public, to share with the board. Uh, when people ask me about the strategic plan metrics, I have to remind them that the BVSD is holding, we are holding ourselves to a higher standard, right, than the state would hold us to, than, than potentially any other school district in the state of Colorado around the transparency that we're providing and, and the, the, the outcomes that we're striving for as a system. And so just lots to, for this board to be proud of, I think lots for our district to be proud of. And I think about the conversations that would happen around this board table four or five years ago, and I think about the conversation that we just had now with the information that we're tracking, the progress that we're making. We understand what's happening, we're intervening in real time, we're seeing some leading indicators of promise, certainly ways to go, but just, I think, a definite celebration for this board and for our district.
Now we get to move on to the very titillating subject of CASB resolutions. I can say, in my seven years on the board, we have never figured out a, like, easy way to get through these. But the point, um, is to try to give, um, well, for two points. One is for you all to know what the resolutions are, so, because it will guide CASB going forward. And second, um, to give Kitty some guidance as to where we are on these, if we should vote for or against them. Um, so, I don't know an easier way to do it than to just go through them. Stacy, do you have a better idea?
I mean, one option would be, we all should have looked through them. So maybe if there's particular ones that Kitty and/or anyone else on the board has questions about, we could just pull it, kind of like a consent agenda sort of situation that would probably be more efficient. Just an idea.
I'm fine with that. Does that work with everybody? Are, are there ones that people want to bring forward, Lisa?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I agree. I was gonna suggest the same thing.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Considering this is my first go, go around with this. So, do, do these, if they are, get approved by the delegates, just show up as is? There's no adjustments by the board? Because some of them seem like they're, they have similar veins and threads, and, um, I just wondered, are, are they gonna exist as written for this term, or does the board kind of work with them and combine things and have similar ideas, or if there's overlap to the standing ones? Just what's that process on the CASB side, if that question makes sense?
Well, the board can't change them, but what will happen is that at the delegate assembly, you can modify them. There can be resolution, it's a pretty fast process, but there's a whole process for modifying these and a process to approve the modifications. Um, but as a board, we're guided by these as well. So we can't go in and say, um, I mean, we can interpret them, but we can't change them. Looking at Kathleen, is that fair? And I will add that we have a brand-new attorney starting to do this, and I feel very sorry for her, because it's a very strenuous process at CASB to do this. But I think it, I love this process, because it feels very democratic. Every district gets one vote, you can go up and talk about it, um, you'll, you learn a lot about where different people's concerns are when it comes to these. So, um, I think it's, it's not exactly fun to watch, but I really like it. So, I don't know. Is anybody else going besides? Are you going, Nicole? Okay. Anybody else?
So, the board doesn't have a, uh, a role, but you'll see that there were endorsements by the, um, LRC Legislative Resolutions Committee, which is a subset, sort of, of the board. There are, there are board members on it, but there's also others. And so, um, you'll see that some have been endorsed by them. They go through every single one and choose which ones that they're going to endorse.
And also, sometimes, if there are two that are very similar, one, one district or another would agree to pull theirs and support the other one. Not always, but...
There's only two things that the LRC can do. They can approve, or they can not approve. They can't not send something forward. So, um, there's some things that CASB has to work out in that process, but that's the way a couple of these made it in, that I personally didn't think were appropriate for resolutions, because this is for legislative, um, governance, not internal governance, and changes to bylaws. But those are the two things that these resolutions are supposed to do.
And just to clarify the, Stacy, what you're alluding to is when that says, when it says forward with a favorable, favorable recommendation? Okay, I wasn't sure whose, whose favorable recommendation that was, but thank you for clarifying.
Richard?
Yeah, could you explain to me what this Resolution 29 and 30 is?
From, from Calhan?
I read it, I read it, I says, well, wait a minute here. That, that's an internal thing, right? So how does that work?
So we're hoping that 30 will be withdrawn because it involves confidential information from the board, but we have not heard officially from Calhan since it was a board resolution, whether they're going to withdraw it or not. So I agree with you, Richard. Um, it was that people could pretty much submit whatever they wanted, which is why I was saying, I think CASB needs to tighten up the kinds of things that can come forward as resolutions, because in policy, to me, it's very clear, it's to govern the legislative agenda. So, we had, as you can see, a board member who was disgruntled, and so brought that forward and didn't get the result that he wanted at the CASB board. It wasn't like the CASB board didn't pay attention to this. We handled it, and we handled it in a way that he was unhappy with for 30. Do you want to say anything more, Stacy?
Um, there's also some inaccurate information in all three of those resolutions that, as a CASB board, we addressed, and, um, a memo went out to all membership about these three resolutions. And, um, I mean, I would urge Kitty to vote no on all three, and, yeah. Um, and we can talk about it more if people want to, um, but there's, all three have inaccurate information.
Do you have any other questions about those, Richard?
No.
They do kind of jump out from the rest, don't they?
Well, it did jump out at me, because I said, oh, wait a minute, our esteemed president's on there.
I, um, I'm not part of leadership, so I'm not going through my second recall effort in a year, but anyway.
Just as an FYI, uh, Resolution 30 that calls for the resignation of the officers, the rationale for asking them to step down are from years ago that none of those three were actually even officers. So that's one of the things that's wrong with that particular resolution. Yeah.
And this won't surprise you, but near and dear to my heart is the NSBA. And we will talk about that at the microphone, but, um, we believe that, that the states that have mostly withdrawn from NSBA have been southern states. The states that have remained are pretty strong western states that we have a whole lot more in common with. And NSBA's done a lot of changes, and I can talk about those at another time, to try to address some of the concerns that members have had. So it's not the same NSBA. And this letter, we paid very careful attention to the letter when it came out to see if there was distrust or people being upset in Colorado, and we received exactly two emails. That was it. So it wasn't like there was a widespread, um, sense of unease or people being unhappy with NSBA when the letter came out, which has now been over a year ago, so.
And then, just to follow up, since we've talked about the other two, 31 is about restructuring the board of CASB. And, um, the board is not opposed to discussing how it can better serve the membership, um, but this particular proposal, um, we, the board, um, as you saw in that memo that was sent to membership, is not in favor of it. Um, and, um, it really is about giving rural districts more voice, and our current board gives rules a lot of voice. They comprise, uh, board members on CAS, on the CASB board represent, um, at least ha, half of the CASB board have rural districts in their region. Um, I think it's more than half, but it's at least half. And so, um, while the, while CASB is not opposed to talking about how the board can be restructured, this particular proposal is not really the best way to do it.
And it doesn't follow the process set out in bylaws for changing bylaws. So part of what they said they would do is try to just submit something along the way that would comply, and that's not how the process works. So, um, and then the only other thing I'll tell you, Richard, is there's some push from some, from specifically one rural superintendent who is very unhappy that we are partnering with the Black School Board Caucus, very unhappy, and has written some very unflattering, I will just call it unflattering, things about the Black Caucus, and does not want us to, to join. And what I will say about the Black School Board Caucus is that they wanted to try to change our bylaws this year, and we encouraged them to give us more time. So they showed, they were at every regional meeting, they sent videos, they are doing this very thoughtfully and very deliberately to make sure that everybody in Colorado understands why we want to have this partnership. I can tell you, NSBA has, has voting seats on the board for, um, for the Black Caucus, the Hispanic Caucus, the Asian-American, and Native, um, so we have, we have people that sit on those. And I can tell you that most states have this kind of representation. We are very late to this conversation in Colorado. And it's, um, the letter was, was offensive. I'm not even gonna send it out because it was so offensive, but it's, we, it will be interesting to hear how that conversation... interesting to hear how that conversation surfaces.
And the process for the Colorado Black School Board Caucus. I got those, I got the words in the wrong order. They are setting the stage for other caucuses to be able to join. So that's the other reason why we didn't, as a board, want them to rush into how it's going and to change the bylaws this year. Well, it's why it's taking a year to do that, so that there's a process in place for others.
It seems like there's a different process for the internal resolutions versus the legislative resolutions, right?
Normally. And the bylaws do set out the way to amend the bylaws. So as Stacy said, we're fine with having that conversation, but we need to follow the bylaws in having the conversation and not just say, oh, you can fix it because who knows if we'll fix it the way they wanted it to be fixed. So there's a reason that there's a structure like that, so. So I hope that answers it, but the stuff from the, some of the Eastern Plains superintendents is really discouraging, I guess is the best way I could put it. I've asked our superintendent if it started to catch fire, if he would help spearhead a letter from our urban superintendents and suburban superintendents in favor of the path that we're following. So we haven't had to do that yet, but I feel pretty comfortable that the front-range superintendents are not in agreement with kind of the distasteful language that's coming out of the Eastern So with that, are there any, other than those three, that, we have our own, you guys remember the ones that we've put out there. Are there any questions about ours? Kitty, I will be happy to explain them to you in a little more detail because I think they're pretty technical on the funding for charter schools, so.
Since Richard started us in backwards order. Resolution number 27 is, I feel like that violates current law with the cameras on school bus signs recording folks. Do we know is that lawful? Would that be a lawful option or are they asking to change law?
I have to get there. I am looking to our school district attorney. I think they're asking to change laws is what they're trying to do with this. That's my understanding of the way this reads. And we see one like this almost every year and I've never seen anything happen with the legislature. The other thing I will tell you is that we can have these resolutions, but absent CASB finding a legislator to bring these forward, then they just pretty much reside in here. And so I don't know that we've, the process would have had to started soon, like now, to find legislators to bring some forward. And I have not heard that CASB has any legislators lined up to take the charge of any of these so far. It could change, but. So if there's an amendment to some random bill, Nicole, that puts this in there, then CASB could say if it passes that we would support it. That's kind of how it. Any others that anyone wants to talk about? Bless you.
I have another question about number 15, additional funding for PTEC. I'm not a big fan because it seems very limited to those participating school districts and there's other work around career and technical education out there. So I'm not, I don't know that that's one that's getting me very excited.
You can see who it was submitted by. I won't say anything else. So I don't know that, I mean, we could tell Kitty to oppose it. I agree with you that the conversation needs to be statewide. So we could say something at the microphone about that and say, you know, you're going to support it, but you think that it's too narrow in focus and that it needs to be something that's broader. So we could make a statement like that. And Richard's agreeing.
I would, that would be the only way I'd feel comfortable supporting it.
Any others? Kitty, were there any you had any questions about that you needed some guidance from us?
Not so far.
This is a frequent flyer as well. It's to try to just say we stand for local control.
Yeah. Does it get any traction?
Does it get any traction typically?
The closest it would come is, I would think, others can correct me if I'm wrong, is the legislation that was passed recently about what the legislature wanted to see in standards, specifically social studies standards. And there's often, you know, an attempt to try to have, you have to pass the test that immigrants have to pass to become citizens, become a law. So there's things like that that kind of raise their head, but I haven't, I don't know when it comes up, if there'll be anything else. I sometimes hear and I shudder that, you know, sex education may come up again and that's because those standards are up for renewal. But those are the kinds of things, Beth, that I could see coming up. And if they do, then we could look at this and I'm sure we would have a conversation as a board when we see what it is, as to whether we would want to support that or not. Does that help? I'll just wait while we flip through them one more time just to see if there's anything else. And you can always let, I'm sorry, go ahead Nicole.
No, I was going to say to clarify on 11 and 12, I just feel a little bit uncomfortable because I feel like it's treading us in the water of, does it, does us supporting this mean that we would support going down a road of not adopting state standards that are inclusive? And like this just, they just don't sit well and so agreeing to them feels like a bit of a struggle. I understand local control, but does that mean not following state standards? Does that mean having instructional materials that are not inclusive on purpose? The sex education topic, I just, I'm trying to, just again, being new, what does this mean if we say, sure, we vote to approve these at the delegates conference?
Yeah, I mean, I'm new here, but I similarly had a moment of pause because it says here, or adopt specific instructional text or content in violation of the local control. Eh, I don't, I don't like that word. It makes me feel uncomfortable. That wording makes me nervous and feel very uncomfortable.
I'm not comfortable with this either and this has come up before. Districts just want to get out of teaching stuff that they don't want to teach, like Kathy had said, that inclusion, sex ed, oh.
That's how I'm seeing it too.
But this mostly, as I read it, says that we would oppose the legislature telling us we have to adopt a text or specific content. So I think it gets around your concern because we would be looking more at content standards as opposed to specific content in textbooks. But I think we could certainly, if, we could say something about how generally we approve this, but it doesn't mean that whatever comes up in the legislature, if there's any specific regulations or content, attempt to, let me say that right, specify content that at the time we might oppose it. So it doesn't give you, like you're saying Nicole, like this carte blanche. Well, you said you were going to approve anything, right? When you don't even know what it is that you're approving. So we could say something general about we support local control of instruction, as we do, but that doesn't mean that whatever comes up in the legislative session, because we say yes to this, that we're going to approve it. We could say something like that. And this doesn't bind us at all.
I'm trying to find it. I thought I saw the resolution that supported District 14.
I don't think.
Is that, is that Resolution 17? Low-performance schools supported local.
I don't think there's one specifically for 14, Richard, in here.
I read into it. Number 17?
Yeah, number 17. And it leads to it?
I think 17 does allude to it for sure, but it doesn't mention it specifically. Are you okay with the language in 17?
No, I support 17, but I think we should do something to have a specific resolution supporting, going against the state board in terms of trying to take control of local school districts.
And I couldn't find it in here and I thought maybe it was going to be somewhere, but it's not.
This kind of sounds like it's in support of Adams, which is it 14 that's had all the problems, saying that instead of state taking over, let's give the districts more support.
So Richard, as I think about it, your conversation might be really appropriate when we get the accountability audit and we try to figure out how we support schools and what authority the state board has and what authority school districts have because part of what happened to Adams 14 was that the language in the accountability law didn't allow them to sue the state board. So it might come up under that as opposed to here. I think that would be a really good place to have the conversation. Does that make sense?
No, that makes a lot of sense. Now, is that a resolution that maybe we might want to draft or?
Let's, let's see what, when the audit comes out next month, let's see what it looks like because we can certainly work with our lobbyists and our legislators to see if there's something that we want to, because I know there will be legislation that will be in response to that audit. And so we can see what we want to add to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others? Kitty, anything that we can do to help? You can see, Richard, under 17, under the rationale statement, it says dissolving a district or breaking it is not a reasonable solution. So they have it in the rationale part. Stacy, is there anything else you think we need? Well, this was somewhat painless, right? We used to go through them one by one and it was very painful. And then we tried to do it by having you send in your votes, but we decided that was a board meeting without a board meeting, so we couldn't do that. So I like the consent agenda idea, so. All right, I think if there's anything else for the good of the order, we'll all get an extra hour back of our night. I'm sure no one will object to that. Richard, you might even make your meeting. Meeting is adjourned.